Changed the color of his hair.
Looks different.
Changed the color of his hair.
He should have seen that.
I wanted to get some air.
Usually they have it half on, they ain't by half off. There's a bright light for bridge.
Call this Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. First thing tonight, we'll have a prayer by Ms. Moxley, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, for the life you have given us, the freedoms we enjoy, and for your gracious and tender mercies. Bless our commissioners as they take on the challenges of leadership. Grant them wisdom, discernment, humility, and guidance they need to fulfill the obligations and responsibilities entrusted to them. Remind us all of the dignity of work and teach us to use our talents and abilities in ways that are honorable and just and are of benefit to those whom we serve. Almighty God, thank you for our public safety telecommunicators and the patience and strength they have been given to deal with everything when lives are on the line, to hear the worst and yet ease a worried mind. Please be with the grieving families and friends of our good and faithful public servants, Deputy Robert Porter and EMS Battalion Chief William Roberts, and bring their families comfort in the days to come. Protect our courageous armed forces, watch over their families, and grant peace and prosperity to our county, our state, and our nation. Now, dear Lord, with deep respect for the faith, traditions, and beliefs of all who are gathered here this evening, hear us in a moment of silence.
Thank you. Mr. David Cotton, Deputy County Manager, will now lead us in the-
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming. Thank you Sheriff Miller for being with us tonight. If anyone has not already silenced their phones, please do so. The Board provides two opportunities for the public to speak during each meeting. There's a three-minute timeframe that you have to address the Board on agenda items, and a second time for public comment is a five-minute at which you can speak on anything that the Board has authority over. We ask that you sign up on the sheets in the rear of the room. As your name is called in the order you've signed up, come forward. Please state your name and address. Comments are to be made to the Board in their entirety. The Board reserves any opportunity to respond to your comments at Commissioners' comments. We ask that your comments are civil in nature and do not endorse a business or a candidacy. The first order of business will be the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Number three is the first public comment for three minutes. Mr. Manager, do we have anyone signed up?
Madam Chair, there is no one signed up for the first public comment, period.
Okay, let's move forward to the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item four, Presentations, Proclamation. There's one proclamation which has been prepared for presentation this evening. At this time, I'll read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation, National Telecommunicators Week 2015. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our first responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Onslow County Communication Center. And whereas the skilled public safety telecommunicator is the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services and are the single vital link for our first responders by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas telecommunications of the Onslow County Emergency Services Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas emergencies can strike at any time, we rely on the vigilance and preparedness of these individuals 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes our telecommunications in Onslow County who provide a critical service to the community and all emergency personnel while performing their duties with integrity, quality, accountability, and respect, present this eighth day of April 2015. Representatives of the Onslow County Emergency Services Department will accept the proclamation. Chairman Eichner requests that Vice Chairman Buchanan present the proclamation. Mr. Vice Chairman.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, this is an honor for me and an honor for the Board of Commissioners because there's quite a few of us on the Board that have had backup from telecommunications. Every one of us that have worked in the field. Without these people that are behind me right now today, we would not have a viable community. Without their help, without their work, especially when they do emergency dispatch, it's amazing what they can do to save a life, even on the phone. And when they get it into the field to our deputies, or if they get it into the field to the firefighters or the paramedics, it's just amazing the work that they do. And I don't know how to say thank you any more than that. I mean, on behalf of my Board, we really praise everything that you do for us. You young lady.
Thank you, Vice Chair. One thing I would like to say is, a lot of people do not realize all the services that we actually provide through the 911 Center. Last year, we processed over 188,000 phone calls through our E-911 Center, and we dispatched for 44 different agencies in and around the county. The dispatchers and telecommunications that we have are actually the very unseen heroes that we actually have in our communities, and we're very thankful for the ones we have. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Mr. Manager, would you start presenting items five, or you have several?
I will, Madam Chair. Thank you. Item five, A, Library Policy Amendments. Mrs. Stell Carter, Library Director, will come forward and present several amendments that we're recommending for changes to the library policies. Ms. Carter.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here this evening to ask that you consider several policy changes to existing library policies. The changes were recommended for approval by the trustees at the January 13th meeting, and they have been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office. Our first change is in our collection development policy. We've removed an inactive hyperlink for American Library Association's Freedom to Read Statement and replaced it with the correct hyperlink. Our disruptive behavior policy was amended to include the phrase "e-cigarettes" in our smoking policy for our facilities. We've had quite a few challenges on that lately. Our library card policy, we corrected an internal supervisory reporting chain by replacing circulation supervisor with public services librarian. And then finally, we changed our public computer use policy to reflect a change we made this fiscal year to begin charging individuals who do not have a library card for guest passes for our computer usage. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about those.
I make a vote to approve the recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item B, Grant Acceptance.
Item B, Grant Acceptance for White Goods Capital Improvements. Solid Waste Department submitted a grant application to NCD Interdivision of Waste Management. Ms. Lisa Ryder, Assistant Director of the Onslow County Solid Waste Department is here to present this item. Ms. Ryder.
Thank you. We applied for a North Carolina Department of Environmental and Natural Resources grant this year to provide funding to purchase a brand-new roll-off truck, especially for our white goods program. This is to increase recycling services for Onslow County citizens. We have received notice that we will be, or we have received that grant, and it is for $149,000. We have an additional $9,000 already that's in our budget that we budgeted for this particular item, and so we are here to hopefully accept this grant.
What's the Board's pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. If I might just add one more thing.
Certainly.
The Onslow County Solid Waste Department has a long history of grant writing, and over the last just 11 years, we've received over a half million dollars in grant funding. And actually, this afternoon, I received another email that we'll be getting another $3,000 from the state for providing some additional recycling services to the county. Thank you.
Keep up the good work, Lisa.
Absolutely. Thank you for applying for those grants.
Item C, Occupational Health Professional Services Contract. Dr. Megan Doyle will be here to present this item. Dr. Doyle.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Board of Commissioners. As you know, Onslow County currently provides a wellness clinic for our employees that has been very successful. For the last year and a half, approximately, our employees have enjoyed the services they receive there, as well as the county has benefited from reduced lost times to work and improved cost for our employees and for our employee health plan. As a result of the efficiencies we've gained through that program, we want to transition our occupational health services to the same clinic that we're receiving our wellness services from. Right now, our occupational health services include pre-employment drug screening, drug screening for random testing, as well as workers' compensation, primary care visits. And so as a result, we will realize some additional savings, but more importantly, lost work time will be reduced even more for our workers' compensation program and for our employees who may be using those benefits, and we'll see increased efficiency for that program as well. So I come to you this evening respectfully asking that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners approve the Occupational Health Professional Services Agreement with Quicker Care Clinics, and that contract has been approved by the county attorney, or actually, has been reviewed by the county attorney, excuse me.
Okay. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, was there any discussion?
I don't think so.
It's a no-brainer, what can I say? Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
Item D, Consolidated Agreement Amendment between the State of North Carolina and Onslow County Health Department. Ms. Angela Lee, our Health Director, is here to present this item to the Board. Ms. Lee.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. For the Health Department to receive state funds, the Onslow County Health Department Director and other county officials must sign the consolidated agreement with the State of North Carolina. This agreement lists the responsibilities of the local health department and the state in accordance with North Carolina general statutes and public health ordinances. This agreement must be renewed yearly, with this one covering the fiscal year 2015, 2016. I respectfully request that the Board consider approval of the consolidated agreement between the State of North Carolina and the Health Department and authorize the Chairman to sign, as well as the Health Director. I would be glad to answer any questions at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Item E, ETJ, or Extraterritorial Jurisdiction Retraction. Mr. Ben Warren, our Planning Director, is here to present this item. Mr. Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Good evening, Madam Chairman, and Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioners. As you may recall, in September of 2013, the City of Jacksonville released several different areas of their extraterritorial jurisdiction back to Onslow County. Essentially, what that means is, within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, that would release the zoning authority and building inspections authority back to Onslow County. When that occurred, we also discussed the potential for several properties along the Onslow Pines Road area to come back into Onslow County's jurisdiction as well. But when we moved forward with the original actions, that area was not one that was included. So we've reconvened those discussions, and so we're here before you this evening for consideration of taking some of those areas back into the county's jurisdiction, specifically the properties to the north and east of Onslow Pines Park.
Any question for you? The Onslow Pines Road being the direction that it goes in, do they still have 17 South?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's-
They bypassed Onslow Pines Road and take everything down to 17 South to the bridge, Southwest Bridge, I believe.
Everything down 17 South, it's basically the frontage properties within probably half a mile all the way down 17 South. And then it comes back along Onslow Pines Road as well, just to Onslow Pines Park.
Okay, thank you.
Or just past Onslow Pines Park. In your packet, you do have a couple of maps in there that show the existing ETJ boundary and the proposed boundary. We have had some further discussion with the City of Jacksonville concerning the property that's directly north of Onslow Pines Park. There's a large tract there that fronts on old Maplehurst Road, and so there's some continual discussion there as to whether or not that would come back to the county's jurisdiction or not. The desire of the county would be to take that piece back into Onslow County's jurisdiction in the event there is a future expansion of Onslow Pines Park. That's kind of the natural progression of the park itself would be onto that property or in that direction. So the county would like to take that piece as well. So there's some further discussions to be had with the City of Jacksonville about that individual piece. But the request this evening would be for the Board of Commissioners to submit a letter of request to the City of Jacksonville to take the areas that you have identified in your packet back into the county's zoning and building inspections authority.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously.
Commissioners, items F, G, well, F, G, A, B, and C, and there are some subsections will follow a little bit different course than normally the Commissioners' items would follow. The reason is, the county is requesting, or the staff of the county is requesting that the Board consider refinancing of some issuances of past debt. And in order for us to meet all of the legal requirements to refinance that past debt, and by the way, the purpose of the refinancing is to lower the interest rates and save approximately $4.4 million in taxpayer dollars in interest over the next 13 years. The reason, that's the reason, but in order for us to be able to do this appropriately, we have received advice of our Bond Council and our county attorney. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I will pretty much read the next several items, and there will be specific instances in which the Board of Commissioners will have to read into the record the names of certain resolutions, et cetera.
Continue.
Item F, Refunding of 2006 School Certificates of Participation, 2008 Justice Complex Certificate of Participation, a portion thereof, county building and jail financing. The county is considering refunding three debt issuances of the county in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $36 million for the purpose of providing funds with other available funds for refunding all or a portion with any other available funds, including paying expenses related thereto. Debts to be refunded include: One, certificates of participation, Series 2006 Schools, dated June 21, 2006. Two, BB&amp;T portion of certificates of participation, Series 2008 Justice Complex, dated November 24, pardon, November 24, 2008. Perin RBC modified the rate on the portion that it held in 2012 in print. Three, BB&amp;T installment financing for county building and jail dated June 1, 2008. Projected savings over 13 years for this is $2.4 million. The projected average annual savings is approximately $188,000. This refunding is being done in order to realize debt savings for the county. The agenda item has several separate actions that must be taken by the Board of County Commissioners. This must be taken in order to consider refinancing prior debt issuances of the county by entering into a proposed installment financing agreement in an amount not to exceed $36 million. The actions include adopting a preliminary resolution that will: A, calls for a public hearing on April 20, 2015 to consider the proposed installment agreement; B, describes the debt that may be refinanced; C, make certain findings on the proposed financing as required by law; D, authorizes county staff to take certain actions, including the filing of an application with the local government commission; E, request that the local government commission approve the agreement; F, approve certain professionals to be on the financing team; and G, directs the clerk to the Board to publish notice of the public hearing. The resolution which would accomplish those items I just read, items A through G, is a resolution entitled, "Resolution Providing for Certain Matters Related to a Proposed Installment Financing Agreement to Refinance a Portion of the Cost of Various Projects." At this time, a Commissioner must introduce this resolution by reading its title into the record. If any Commissioner would like to introduce the resolution, now would be the time.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Providing for Certain Matters Related to the Proposed Installation Finance Agreement
or Refinancing a Portion of the Cost of the Various Projects.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item G, Refunding of 2008 General Obligation Bonds. The county is considering authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds of the county in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $27,250,000 for the purpose of providing funds with any other available funds for refunding all or a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation school bonds, Series 2008, dated April 1, 2008, including paying expenses related thereto. The projected savings over 13 years is $2 million. The projected average annual savings is approximately $150,000. This refunding is being done in order to realize debt service savings for the county. Actions necessary to proceed with refunding of the 2008 general obligation bonds are: One, consideration of a preliminary resolution relating to the authorization of refunding bonds of the County of Onslow, North Carolina; Two, introduction of bond order authorizing $27,250,000 refunding bonds; Three, filing of a sworn statement of debt by the finance director; Four, filing of a sworn statement of estimated interest on the bonds by the finance director; Five, adoption of the order authorizing $27,250,000 refunding bonds; and Six, publication on April 10, 2015, of the bond order. This agenda item has several separate actions that must be taken by the Board of Commissioners in order to authorize the issuance of bonds not exceeding $27,250,000 in order to refund all or a portion of the county's outstanding general obligation school bonds, Series 2008. Refunding bonds may be issued at any time prior to the final maturity of the debt or obligation to be refunded. This refunding is being done in order to realize debt service savings for the county. A, consideration of a resolution relating to the authorization of refunding bonds of the County of Onslow. During this meeting, the Board of Commissioners should authorize the filing of an application for approval of the refunding of certain outstanding general obligation bonds with the local government commission of North Carolina. The Board of Commissioners has received a copy of the resolution, its agenda packet, and a copy is available with the clerk to the Board. The resolution would be effective immediately upon its passage. At this time, any Commissioner may introduce the resolution by reading its title into the record of the meeting this evening. It would be appropriate for a Commissioner to read the title of the resolution at this time.
Resolution related to the authorization of refunding bonds of Onslow County, North Carolina.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any questions?
I just got one question. Jeff, does the new finance, and does that extend the period of the original loan?
No, it does not, sir.
So it's the same time period, just lower interest, that saves us the money?
That's correct, sir.
That's all I have.
No further? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The refunding bond of $27,250,000 passes five to zero. At this time, I'd like to instruct the clerk to publish the order and the appended statements which are required by the Local Government Bond Act.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we would move to the bond order, item B, with your permission.
Sure.
Introduction of Bond Order Authorizing $27,250,000 Refunding Bonds. This is the introduction of the order into the public and into the record of Onslow County. This order must be read in its entirety. Madam Chair, if a member of the Board would be willing to introduce the order authorizing $27,250,000 refunding bonds by reading the title.
Introducing the entitled Authorization of $27,250 Refunding Bonds.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, I probably should have waited. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion first? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Passes five to zero.
Madam Chair, I will need to read the order into the record at this time.
Okay.
Order authorizing $27,250,000 refunding bonds, be it ordered by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Onslow, North Carolina: One, that pursuant to the Local Government Bond Act as amended, the County of Onslow, North Carolina, the county, is hereby authorized to issue refunding bonds in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $27,250,000 for the purpose of providing funds with any other available funds for refunding all or a portion of said county's outstanding general obligation bonds, Series 2008, dated April 1, 2008, including paying expenses related thereto; Two, that taxes shall be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and the interest on said bonds; Three, that a sworn statement of debt of the county has been filed with the clerk to the Board of Commissioners for the county and is open to public inspection; and finally, Four, that this order shall take effect upon its adoption. At this time, I would need to call upon the Finance Director, Mr. David McCold, to come to the podium and publicly file the sworn statement of debt with the clerk to the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Cole, please come forward.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. The sworn statement has been completed, and I have prepared to submit it to the clerk to the Board. Just to give you a quick overview of what the sworn statement of debt tells, we're required to list all our current outstanding debt at this moment in time, and also list our current assessed value, which would be our tax base at this given time, and then we calculate the percentage of our debt that make, the percentage of our debt compared to our assessed value, which in the sworn statement comes to 1.4%. And that's been completed, and it's ready to be submitted to the clerk to the Board. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have concerning this sworn statement of debt if you might have any.
Any questions? Okay. Okay.
Let the record show that the finance officer has filed publicly with the clerk to the Board of Commissioners a sworn statement estimating the total amount of, excuse me, the sworn statement of debt with the clerk to the Board of Commissioners.
At this time, do I need to re-instruct the clerk to?
Not yet, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. David McColl has one additional filing.
Okay.
Mr. McColl, will you file the sworn statement estimating the total amount of interest that we paid on the bonds?
Yes, I have that done, and it's completed, and I'm prepared to turn it over to the clerk to the board. If you have any questions on this document, I'd be more than happy to answer anything you might have.
You've compiled the amount of interest that is going to be compiled?
That we'll be paying on the new debt through the financing. It's an estimated amount that we're required by statute to document that.
Any questions on that amount? Okay.
With the public filing of the sworn statement estimating the total amount of interest that we paid on the bonds, that concludes the introduction of the bond order. The bond order may now be voted on by the Board of County Commissioners. Madam Chair, a vote of the board for the bond order is now appropriate.
Okay.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bond order passes by a vote of five to zero. Now I need to instruct the clerk to publish the order and the appended statement that is required by Local Government Bond Act.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes all of the legal requirements necessary to refinance a significant amount of debt for the county and save the taxpayers of Onslow County $4.4 million in interest.
So we've accomplished all of the legalese, I hope, in the appropriate order. So we have no appointments, we pulled nothing from the consent agenda. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Madam Chair, there are no individuals that have signed up for the second public comment, period.
Okay. Mr. Manager, would you like to have manager's comments?
Please, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board. Tonight, it was a very tedious process to refinance the bonds, and the county does not do that very often. In fact, it's been, it's probably been a while since we've been able to refinance. Two years, our finance director says, since we've been able to refinance. But I would like for the public to know that we are continuously looking at the market, and at any time that we can get a lower interest rate, not extend the term of our loans, and save money for the public, we're doing that. In fact, our financial strength has been demonstrated a couple of times this evening. First of all, we received a grant of $149,000 from Deener, and that's been fantastic. They're a solid waste office. We're always looking for grant money. There's a lot less now than there used to be, but we're always looking for it. Through our HR department, we have been able to identify lost time savings by moving our occupational therapy provision of service, and that's been, I believe, will be a tremendous help to our departments in saving time, and as they say, time is money when you're paying individuals. And then finally, the refinancing and the job that our finance office is doing. I'd also be remiss if I didn't publicly thank our professional telecommunications that are in the room. We sincerely appreciate the work that you do. Tonight, we've talked a lot about money, and we've talked about how hard we've worked to save money. When our telecommunications and our other emergency services employees go to work, they save lives, and there's no price that can be placed on that. So I thank you. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I'm sure the board echoes your sentiments. It's a tremendous job by our telecommunications. Mr. Bright, welcome back. We're glad you're feeling better.
It is a pleasure to be back. Glad to be here.
Well, why don't you go first?
See all your smiling faces. Congratulations to the telecommunications. 188,000 calls for service last year. That's just about one call forever, live person that's a resident in Onslow County, per person, although it's not the same person, but that's a lot of calls and it's a lot of service. And like Vice Chair Buchanan said, communications is the backbone for emergency services for our law enforcement. Without that, you can't survive out there in emergency situations. So thank you for what you do. You don't get praised enough, but you never seen, but you always know that you're there. Thank you. Recycling, the grant that we got from the solid waste, the solid waste is a total enterprise fund now self-sustaining. Everybody should recycle, saves the county landfill, and it also puts money back into the enterprise fund so we can expand that project. So that is a very important operation. So thank you to the folks at the landfill for doing what you do to make things and get their grants and help us to better our landfill. Thanks to the staff on this research and saving us $4.4 million in interest over a 13-year period. I know that you folks are out, David, with finance and out looking for ways to save money, and if we can save on finance charges and save $4.4 million over 13 years, that's four cent on the tax books, basically, that we're saving. So thank you again for staff and what you do, and I appreciate it. Have a good evening and have a safe trip home.
Thank you, Mr. Bright. Ms. Webs?
Yes, I'd like to concur as to exactly what Commissioner Bright has stated this evening, the money that we're saving our taxpayers, and just knowing the grants that are coming into our communities here to offset some of the budgets, offset some of what we need to have in making this community a much better community for all of the citizens. And secondly, I'd also like to state that I thank you, the telecommunications, because my husband, I had to call 911 for the first time, living here 11 years, and I'm telling you, if you've never had to go that route, you want to know when you make that 911 call that they're there. So I can't thank you enough for the citizens that you serve, and my husband and I both thank you. So with that, I'm going to pass that on, and have a good night.
Thank you. Mr. Jarman?
I just echo what the fellow commissioners have said. I just appreciate all that the employees do for Onslow County. We've got a great bunch, and I just appreciate all of them.
Yeah. Thank you. Vice Chair?
There's not much more to add, but the wellness program is one of the benefits that our employees have when they don't have to pay co-pay, and it means a whole lot to me as a Commissioner. It saves our employees a lot of money, and I want to thank you on that, behalf of that. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Thank you. Just one note, I would like to extend my personal sympathy to our tax assessor, Harry Smith, the loss of his mother. I know it's very trying, and I extend the sympathy of all of the employees to Harry. Also, too, I agree with everything that the rest of the commissioners said, our telecommunications, our solid waste people, it's, it, a lot of times makes the difference, these grants that the health department and all of the different departments get. It's the difference many times on whether or not we can provide that little bit of extra, because if it had to all come out of the taxpayers' budget, we just wouldn't be able to afford some of these things. So it's a tremendous help when our departments apply for grants, and even if it's a matching grant, it's a benefit to all the citizens in Onslow County. I think that the refinancing is just one more aspect of how this Board of Commissioners and our staff are constantly looking at how we can save dollars. So I'm grateful, I believe we've got a tremendous staff that works for us, and the citizens of Onslow County ought to be proud of you, because I'm proud of you. So no further said. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Go home to your baby.